Good evening. Welcome to the board meeting for January 28. Meeting is started. And then, do we have any comments from the public on closed session items? Seeing none, I am closing this meeting to go to closed session. Good evening, I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:03 on January 28, 2025. So, at this point, we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and then I have a report out on closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. The Board voted for zero to approve the settlement of case number SS2425-04. And now, we'll have special recognitions, reports, and presentations. So if Petaluma Education Foundation Impact Grants presentation, can they come up? Hi, Maureen.
Good evening, Happy New Year. I haven't seen you since the new year started. So Happy New Year and welcome to the newest board member. It's nice to have you onboard with the team. So my name is Maureen Hyland. I am the Executive Director of the Petaluma Educational Foundation. I am here tonight with a few of our board members. So I appreciate their attendance in support of our presentation. We are a 501(c)(3). We are about forty-two and a half years old here in town. We support all public, private, and charter schools in the community. So thirty-five schools and about 12,000 students annually. We do that through our grant and scholarship program. And tonight, I'm here to update you on our grant awards to schools in your district. So is there a slide today, David? Okay. Well, while we're waiting for that. So we, as I said, we support our students through grants and scholarships, and we also manage other nonprofit funds. Our mission is to support all our schools in our community and with an educational opportunities that promote critical thinking, creativity, student well-being, and lifelong learning. We do not receive state or government funding. We instead rely on our partnerships with individuals and companies in town, as well as other foundations, to support the programs we offer. Just trying to go through it while catching up. It's all good. I know, it's gonna be fabulous when you see it.
Maureen, can you kind of give a little background on how you began? You know, like forty-two years ago, just like a real short little history?
Sure, that's slide two. Oh, sure. That's slide two. We started actually in response to Prop 13 and programs being cut in education. So community members came together to raise funds to help support those programs and bring them back to the schools. And so from that point, we have had generations of leadership on our board and generations of students benefit from our support. Sure. All good. Okay. Do I have a... Sorry, I... Excellent. Alright, thanks David. Okay, so I think we covered that history bit right there on slide two. We are on track for actually after our scholarships award this April to exceed ten million in funding to schools and students since we started. So, the thing... I already explained to you our mission and our funding model. Tonight, I'm here to share with you the grants that are awarded specifically to your schools in your district. Oh, we lost a photo, but we're good. So this year, you received over $148,000 for programs such as for the school debate at CASA, literacy at Grant, Pengrove, McKinley, and Valley Vista all had literacy. We have Petaluma High Photo Journalism. They also at the auto shop at the high school, the wind tunnel. We had digital media at junior high, the second phase. We funded the first phase last year when it launched. All of these programs support students in the classroom. It is curriculum-based funding, and we fund across subject matters and across grade levels. This year, as I said, you're just under $150,000, but that brings a grand total to over $255 million just to Petaluma City Schools. As I mentioned a few moments ago, we're in the middle. Last night, our scholarship application portal closed. So we have a lot of class of 2025 applying for scholarships. We include scholarships across all different academic focus areas. People establish the scholarships over things that they're passionate about or a memory or in honor of others. And including one alumni from Petaluma High started Apply Beyond Fund, which is a fund that allows students for all four grade levels to apply for AP testing fees, college application fees, and all those types of things. So we have awarded quite a bit of money out of that in the last few years. You have received last year just under $240,000 to the students from Petaluma City Schools for our scholarship program. Our total amount awarded is just under five. We are inviting you all to attend our scholarship reception on April 16. It'll be at Petaluma High at 7:00 PM. You will receive formal invites. But this is, we're hoping to be on track to award at least 250, if not more, which would take us over the 10 million mark. So I just wanted to share that with you and update you that your schools applied for and receive funding through our grant program, which is a competitive process. So you should be proud of all those principals and teachers that took the time to do that. Our grant program also awards, as of this year, up to $20,000 per award, including a 10% can be used for time and training to support the staff. Okay, so is there any questions?
Just thank you for everything that you do. Really, it really is a tremendous asset in our community. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Maddie, we appreciate that. And we do look at... We do look at the school boards of all our districts as our partners, and our teachers, and our principals, and our admins, and everyone as a partner in PEF. You are all part of that legacy, and we're very proud of working together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so now we have the Kennelworth Colts coming up and giving their school report.
Hi, my name's Zoe. I'm a leadership student at Kennelworth. So at Kennelworth, we do many amazing things that make our kids' junior high experiences special and entertaining and make all students feel valued. Everyone who is a part of Kennelworth works hard to keep our school inclusive and to make our school the outstanding place that it is. Please enjoy our site report video. Hello, everyone. You've seen our campus, and you've seen some of our students. But in this video, you'll see what makes us and our school special and what makes it all unique. Welcome to Diversity at Kennelworth.
Welcome.
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 To...
To Kennelworth.
There are some unique events and experiences that Kennelworth provides. Our PE program gives students so many different opportunities that others are yet to have. We have various interesting and fun units here.
Hi, School Board Members, this is Casey Stolpe at Kennelworth. Every year, we have a competition that encourages staff to support the Movember Awareness Month by Not Shaving. And then at the end, we have a competition, and I am actually a four-time champion this year and looking forward to next year's competition.
We have an outstanding staff here at Kennelworth, and all of our wonderful teachers like to be involved with the children and create fun and interesting things for them. Two of our seventh-grade teachers, Mr. Caldwell and Mr. Stolpe, put on a hilarious and stupendous magic show on Halloween during lunch at our school. They interacted with the kids and moved around, stopping by all the kids and invited them to be a part of the show.
What made it easier to transition to middle school?
My friends being here.
Friends.
I would say friends.
Friends.
I get to go to more classes and see more of my friends.
Like the people that I know that like were here, like the eighth graders.
The staff made it easier to move from elementary to middle school.
Planners and staff.
The students at Kennelworth are a huge part of what makes our school so extraordinary. Many students have various sounding and notable talents and skills that we would like to share with you.
What unique activity did you participate in outside of Kennelworth?
Outside of school, I model, and I also do some commercials. But when I was younger, I sang this song, "Remember Me," from Coco for Pixar Studios.
Hi, my name's Carter Bryant. Some of the unique activities I do after school is Boy Scouts, mountain biking, skiing. I also sprint kayak, which is an Olympic sport which you compete in different sprint distances.
Hi, my name is Dallas, and outside of school, I do barrel racing. And it's like where you go around like barrels on your horse, and it's like you get like times and you like win stuff.
Hi, my name is Valentina Barajas.
And I'm Catalina Rodriguez.
And we do Ballet Folclorico.
Which is a Mexican culture dance where we wear long, colorful, and bright dresses.
We are unique.
We are inclusive.
We are Kennelworth!
From fake magic to circus juggling in PE to recognizing the unique outside endeavors of our students, Kennelworth is an inclusive community that celebrates our students. Thank you for watching.
Hey, thank you. Wonderful job. Thank you for bringing your Kennelworth. What is your name, the Kennelworth Cult? Do you have a name? The Cult.
Here right now, and then our other cult is still at school.
Oh, you have two. Excellent, well, great job. Wonderful. Okay, so now we're going to do our Students of the Month. When I call your name, please come up. So we're starting with Kennelworth. Very good. Madeline Brown and Bithan Banerjee. Oh. What? Oh. Oh. Yeah.
Would you like to go out there, shake your hand, and be in here?
Thank you. I'm still getting this down, sorry. Oh, just wait until they have that.
Oh, do I say it now?
You'll get me. Alrighty, we're ready.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Madeline Brown. Maddie has been chosen Student of the Month because she is one of Kennelworth's hardest-working students and brightest personalities. Maddie is an outstanding student and fun and positive presence throughout Kennelworth. Maddie comes to school daily with a smile, a positive attitude, and is ready to work hard. Mr. Chickatelli, Maddie's English teacher, was eager to share. Maddie is a wonderful student. I can always count on Maddie to give her best effort every day. Ms. Martin, Maddie's PE teacher, added, "Maddie, Maddie, Mad Dog Brown is an extremely hard worker, is well-liked by her peers, and has a great sense of humor. Maddie is just fun to be around." Outside of school, Maddie is a talented and competitive volleyball player. Maddie excelled for the Colts volleyball team and continues to shine for her club's indoor and sand volleyball programs. Even with her busy schedule, Maddie has also found time to volunteer at Church Food Bank. After high school, Maddie would like to attend cosmetology school and go into business for herself. At Kennelworth, we cannot be any more proud of Maddie. Congratulations, Maddie.
Thank you. Can we have Maddie's friends and family stand to acknowledge your wonderful... Thank you. Hello. Oh, sorry.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Bithan Banerjee. Bithan was chosen Student of the Month by his teachers for his dedication, academic excellence, and his exemplary citizenship. Bithan has maintained a 4.0 grade point average at Kennelworth while also impressing his teachers and with his class participation and his willingness to help other students. Bithan is described by his teachers as friendly, respectful, insightful, and hardworking. Ms. Manera's, Bithan's Math 1 teacher, shared, "Bithan is an excellent math student. Bithan has great math intuition and works hard every day to make sure he understands each topic in advanced math. Bithan is a great worker both on his own and is an asset to any group he's in." Not only is Bithan an outstanding student, but his accomplishments outside of school are equally impressive. Bithan is a black belt in Taekwondo and has been taking Kana lessons weekly since he was five years old. After high school, Bithan would like to attend a four-year university focusing on math, science, and robotics for medical applications. Bithan is an outstanding young man, and we are confident he has a bright future ahead of him. Congratulations, Bithan.
Congratulations. Can we have his family and friends stand, please? So we can acknowledge you. Great job. Now we have Petaluma Junior High. To come up, Anna Sofia Ramirez Romo and Nolan Freiberg.
Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Anna Sofia Ramirez Romo. Anna was chosen as Student of the Month because, in addition to being an outstanding scholar as ASB President, she is the heart and soul of the community at PJHS. Mr. Lomansky, Anna's teacher, says that she genuinely cares about others and looks out for those around her. Anna leads by example, but also speaks out as a leader when the situation calls for it. She is one of the most all-around outstanding students I've seen in years. Anna says her favorite thing about PJHS are the special connections between students and teachers and all of the opportunities it brings to students to exploit their strengths and strengthen their weaknesses. We are luckily lucky to have Anna representing PJHS as our January Student of the Month. Congratulations, Anna.
Congratulations. Can we have Anna's family and friends stand, please? So we can acknowledge them.
Now I get to present.
Now you get to do it.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Nolan Freiberg. Nolan was chosen as Student of the Month because he exemplifies what it means to be bantam. Nolan has made tremendous progress during his time at PJHS. Nolan's teachers say that it has been wonderful to see Nolan develop into a confident, outgoing student. Nolan has great study habits and excellent class participation. Nolan's favorite things about PJHS are Mr. Griffin, his agriculture class, and his friends. Nolan's hobbies include being a sea scout, practicing archery, and riding dirt bikes. After high school, Nolan would like to attend California Maritime Academy or Kings Point Maritime Academy and become a tugboat captain. We are lucky to have Nolan representing PJHS as our January Student of the Month. Congratulations, Nolan.
Thank you. Can we have Nolan's family and friends stand to acknowledge? Thank you. Nice job. Okay, moving to Casa Grande High School, Avery Coddington and Trey Hanson.
I'm not seeing Avery on Zoom at this point, but I'll keep looking.
Yeah, you can still read it.
Okay. Avery Coddington is currently a senior at Casa Grande High School who has dedicated her time to taking rigorous courses as well as participating in cross-country and track. Ever since elementary school, Avery has done above and beyond in her classes, studying and completing extra work at home. From middle school and beyond, Avery has worked hard to excel in every class, taking as many honor and AP courses as she can. Not only has Avery excelled in academics, but she is also an active volunteer in her community. She has been volunteering at the Redwood Food Bank since her freshman year, creating food baskets for families in need. She also works with canine companions to foster dogs. Avery's favorite volunteer opportunity has been volunteering with an elementary school class at Miwok Elementary School for autistic children. She has enjoyed her time in this class, forming many important relationships with her students. Avery has been running cross-country and track since freshman year and has been a top runner on her team, running times to qualify for top invitational meets. Beyond high school, Avery plans to attend a four-year university, preferably at a state, to study biology in hopes of becoming a pediatrician.
If you're watching, Avery. Congratulations.
No, okay. Trey Hanson is a senior from Casa Grande High School who has devoted his efforts to a challenging course load. Having taken a large amount of AP, honor, and JC classes, Trey has exhibited unrelenting motivation and maintaining a strong academic career while also broadening his interests. One of, one class in particular, AP Human Geography, has given Trey a path for his future. After taking the class, he decided that he wants to become a civil engineer in order to help the world's urban communities grow and thrive. Beyond academics, Trey is a big fan of music. He has been a member of the Casa Grande Band Program for all four years and has the opportunity to march in parades and participate in numerous concert performances. Trey has also played a hand in reviving Casa Grande's academic decathlon program this year as the club's vice president. Now, Trey enjoys the company of his friends before he goes off to university and tries to make the best of every day.
Thank you, congratulations. Can Trey's family, are they here, or friends? Yay! Fabulous. I know the family. Okay. Now, Petaluma, you're ready. Eduardo Baron Valdez and Ella Steiner.
That's me. Oh, I'm presenting his...
Of course.
Okay. Eduardo Baron Valdez is a senior at Petaluma High School. Eduardo has shown dedication and determination throughout high school, consistently working hard to achieve goals like excelling in academics and developing important life skills such as time management and balancing responsibilities at home and school. Because of his kindness towards others and responsibility, Eduardo has earned the honor of being Student of the Month. Eduardo is excited for life after high school and plans to attend Sacramento State University to study forensic science. He is grateful for all the support and experiences gained at Petaluma High School and cherishes the memories and connections made with peers and staff. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Eduardo's family, can you stand and friends? Congratulations.
Okay, and the other one is me, so I'm gonna have someone else...
You're not reading your own. I'll read it if you want.
Ella Steiner is currently a senior at Petaluma High School. As current ASB Vice President and Outreach Captain, she is very involved in the school. One of her upcoming ASB projects is collecting donations for the United Civil Policy of the North Bay. She has also organized food drives for COTS as well as the Safe Team. Ella also serves a Petaluma High School representative at the Petaluma City School Board meetings, where she acts as a liaison between Petaluma City School Board and Petaluma High. She is currently part of an internship program called Climate Action Pathways for Schools, which thrives to make Petaluma City Schools more sustainable. As part of this team, she audits local schools and calculates energy consumption ultimately, making recommendations to the school board on ways to conserve energy. One of their top objectives is to reduce single-use plastics in the school lunches. After high school, she plans to attend a four-year college and major in neuroscience on a pre-med track. Outside of school, Ella provides nursery care for young kids at a local church. She loves working with children and providing a safe space for them to express themselves. Ella really values the importance of giving back to her community in a variety of ways. She hopes to become a doctor in order to continue serving others.
Congratulations, Ella. Can Ella's family stand up, please, so we can acknowledge them? Wonderful, thank you all. Boy, we have some wonderful kids here and families and everything. Yeah, we're gonna, so I think we're gonna take a... Ten? No, five. Five-minute break, and so that, you know, the families can go back and the students can get back to work. We are coming back into order. Thank you very much. Oh, goodness. It is 6:38. We are starting our meeting. We are now going to, comments from the public on special recognition, reports, presentations, and non-agendized items. I will read our public comment language. "The Board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute-per-person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter." Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, "Members of the public have a right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. If the comment is something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items," which is now. "Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items." While Government Code allows speakers to criticize districts' policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy, BP1312.1, specific to complaints against employees. You can also submit your input in writing, by email, or other means to the superintendent, the board president, which is me, Maddie Cloud, which is M. Cloud. which is mcloud@petk12.org, board members, or other designated staff members. So now, I see no public we have coming forward to comment. So we will go on to Agenda Item Nine, Adoption and Approval of the Agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
A second.
Great. We will, the agenda has been approved. Now we have, oh, we have to take the vote. I did this last time. Sorry, now we vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Nope. Okay, the motion passes. Ten, Report on the Activities and Correspondence of Our School Board Members. We had the protocol, our governance, Petaluma's School Board's Governance Handbook Protocol Update, the Snack Committee, which is the Nutrition Committee, CASA Basketball Games, SCO Social Justice and Equity Conference, the Adult Ed Graduation, NAACP Freedom Fund Gala, the Petaluma People's March, Agenda Review, Continuous Improvement Committee, Safe Routes to School Task Force. Olivia, one of our student board members, who unfortunately is sick tonight, went to the PTSA meeting and the TQ practices. So does anybody have any comments about where they went?
Do. I went to the, it was the first annual SCO Social Justice and Equity Conference, and it was amazing. There were, I don't know, maybe 150 educators from all over Sonoma County. There were some folks from PCS there as well. There were a bunch of different topics about culturally responsive classrooms and teaching and grading for equity, all just a lot of things. I want to say the one that stood out the most to me was one of our keynotes, and he talked about radically inclusive schools and what makes schools radically inclusive. Yeah, and it was just like a lot of food for thought and just really timely and hoping that we can continue these things, you know, within our current climate, so yeah.
Sounds wonderful. Yeah. Anybody else? I just wanted to give a kind of a shout out to the Adult Ed Graduation. You know, it's always just so inspiring. Our new principal there, Michelle Deveraux, and the assistant principal, Dani Camber, just did a great job. And the staff, the teachers, they just do such a great job there. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate that ceremony every year and that I want to celebrate those students' stories and the tremendous amount of perseverance and positivity throughout trying to get your high school diploma, you know, after you, after year 18. So anyway, I just wanted to shout out to them. The other thing is that for this Safe Routes to School Task Force, they have two walk and rolls happening. One is a walk and roll to school for our hearts, which is in March. No, I'm sorry, it's in February, of course, because, you know, it's February. And it's on the 5th of February. So we encourage all of our students and families to walk or bike to school. And then in March, they have the March of the Penguins. Is that cute? Okay, so that's all I have. Yeah.
Thank you, Maddie. I just wanted to have a quick report out on today. The Board of Supervisors in Sonoma took the first steps to get the funding for Measure I, the Our Kids, Our Future Initiative, which passed overwhelmingly at the ballot this past November. They finalized the Citizens Advisory Commission to oversee the spending of the initiative and the audit of how the money is spent. So I just wanted to, first of all, like, I was incredibly proud to be part of the kitchen cabinet that passed the measure. You know, so many of our kids have lost early childhood. I think touch points from daycare to programs during COVID, and this is the funding to kind of restore that and ensure that as our folks are entering, our children, our students are entering TK, they are entering at a level playing field. So just want to say that anyone who's watching, that the Citizens Advisory Commission is now open, so the county is accepting the applications, and I encourage everyone who is interested in this to apply.
That is fabulous. Thank you. Really good. I'm glad they're moving on that quickly. Okay, going on to comments from the public on consent items. Seeing none, we will continue to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Can we, can we make an amendment?
Yeah, so you, yeah.
Never mind.
So Joanna, you wanted to pull it.
Ooh, this feels very loud tonight. Where is the item? Which item number is it? Item 13.2.1, the contracts.
And it's contract number?
Contract number 2425 from the agenda, just to discuss and vote on separately.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as revised.
A second.
Great. So then we will pull the contract, oh, we have to just. Sorry. Okay, so now we vote on pulling 13.2.1 item, which is a contract 2425 from the consent agenda.
It just gets pulled. We can vote on, the motion was on the rest, the remaining of the consent calendar.
So you can just approve the consent?
Oh, it was? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, okay, so I restate that we need a vote on approval of the consent agenda as amended.
I just want to clarify, we're just pulling 2425-94.
Dash nine four. Thank you. And are we pulling, sorry, I need a clarification on that. Are we pulling it to discussion or to action?
Both.
So you want it under action so that we vote on it tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion as amended passes. Now I need.
Now you can technically do the item that Trustee Pahn pulled, and you can have that as an action item, just like you would do. You can get clarification, you can ask questions, you can take a vote, and then you can discuss.
So I don't have to wait till action?
You can do it now.
Okay, so let's do that now. So Amanda, it's a contract for the, I can't get it on my computer, PBIS from Humboldt County.
Yes, the vendor is Humboldt County Office of Education for PBIS Training in the amount of $6,558.
I just want more information on this. I know that we had had another provider. I don't even know who to direct my questions to, to you, to you, to you. Oh, it's my, um. Because I know, are we still under contract with Dr. Moyman? When did, when did that one end?
So we actually were under contract with her, but for a much lower amount. So this year, she provided some systematic supervision training to some of our classified staff members at the beginning of the year. She does some coaching hours with me around, as we're transitioning to some, more of it being within the realm of student services and building capacity. So we're, we decrease the amount that she would be providing. And then Humboldt County was an organization, they're our region provider for PBIS. And so in talking with them, they are providing, they provided a session in August to our elementary staff, and they'll do a secondary training for our seven through 12 sites at our March PD Day. And so looking at some local and regional professional development providers and continuing to work on our Tier One system. So they're doing some direct PD with our staff, and Laura Moyman did some work with our classified.
So which staff are, and I, okay, so they've already done the August and they're going to do the March. So what staff do they work with in, like, within our district, you were saying?
Teachers.
With the teachers, okay.
Yeah. Humboldt is, and then Laura did some work with our classified staff.
And, and I guess I want to just raise a concern because, I mean, just like looking, and I know we're going to discuss them later, all of the, all of the site, the SARC, all of the SARC. I just don't know if we are moving down the right path because, and just anecdotally, and y'all feel free to chip in, because like, just in talking with the community and like at office hours and just different things, it doesn't feel like everyone's bought into it. And so I wonder if we should continue with the PBIS, if it's not being done with fidelity or if everyone's not bought into it.
So, great question. The, one of the things that we're looking at, so with our Special Education Audit, MTSS, which PBIS is an evidence-based tiered behavior support system. And so it is, it is an evidence-based approach that when we look at our students with IEPs and we look at our Special Education Audit, they are, there are systems that should be in place to support all of our students. And so those are some of the discussions that we're having around. What is the missing piece? And I'm actually doing visits to every single school to look at, to check in with them about their progress, what is working, what isn't, what else is needed? And providing also, looking at our suspension rates, looking at their behavioral referrals, making sure that there's communication happening with staff. So these are some of the things that as we look at sort of that sustaining of the program and deepening, looking at, you know, where are we and how can we continue to support? And get, you're right, and look at what are some of those barriers or what are some of those things where folks may not quite understand? And how do we work together as a system to, to improve that? As we build those multi-tiered systems of support.
And I know that we, that they've already provided services, so I don't want to like stalk their payments for the first part. But I, and I guess before we have any more of these come to us, I guess I would want to hear, now I guess I would want to hear what comes of, you know, your site visits and talking with folks. Because I'm just not seeing a change in our, just our, our school climates, you know?
Yeah, I can come and do like a report on, yeah, I would be happy to come back and do a presentation and, yeah, for sure.
And, you know, I've been thinking about this for a while. And then one of the speakers at the conference was saying, you know, just like about the radically inclusive schools, you can have PBIS, you can have SEL, you can have restorative practices, but if they're not all working together and the folks aren't all buying in, like, I remember a couple of years ago, it might have been when Amy was still principal, was talking about how PBIS is being implemented at Pengrove. And like some of the other elementary teachers seem to be doing fairly well with it, but it doesn't seem like at the secondary sites, it's the same buy-in and the same type of, like, results or favorability with it. So I just wonder if we should pause on this. I mean, I know that you're already contracted with them for March, but just moving forward, if there's something else that we should be looking at, if PBIS is not taking hold at the secondary level, if it's at the elementary, fine. And if we're starting to see movement, they're fine. But I don't know if it's right for the secondary, if we're still seeing the same issues, so.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. I think it's important as we, you know, these systems take three to five years to take hold. And when you have changeover in administration and changeover in staff, and there's lots of, of moving parts to it, but I think ultimately our eye is on, how are we improving the culture and climates of our school, right? And there's lots of elements that come into play with that, both from a, do our kids know all of our behavior expectations? Do, you know, do we have restorative practices in place? Do we have, all of us are sort of moving in the same direction around the language that we use with our students and the redirections? So there's, it's, it's big. And I think that working with our secondary staff and our teams to see, you know, what are, what are those things that we can do to improve? And what are other things that can be brought in as well to enhance?
On, building on that, in our Continuous Improvement Committee, and, you know, we're always discussing the, our professional development days and how they are impacting, you know, our, our dashboard and our terrible numbers. And, and climate is of course part of that. And I would love to see, you know, just kind of like what Joanna was saying, like a reimagining of how this works so that, you know, and working with the Continuous Improvement Committee, because I don't know if these workshops are actually changing the culture of the schools. So, and the climate at the schools. And so if we're spending all this time and all of these teachers are spending all this time and energy, nobody wants to, that to be wasted. So I think maybe it needs to go beyond just, you know, those two or three professional development days and have it looked at really at individual schools, which was originally what we were looking at, was that this, the contractor, initially our contractor was going to go to each one of our sites and evaluate and kind of personalize their, their workshops and their professional development. And it just, it, for a variety of reasons, didn't work that way. Maybe we could go back to something like that. Because I, you know, and especially at the secondary. It's a much harder, you know, nut to crack, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Appreciate the feedback.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the table? Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the contract for PBIS.
Second? I need a second.
I have a question.
I guess a point.
But what if we don't approve it, then have they gotten paid for the August 12?
They have not yet been, and so it would be a ratification for the services prior. And they would invoice us for the amount that they, which is under, it would be half if that.
I have to say that it's already planned in the professional development for the March 10.
I hear that, and I would, can we get some more information? I just want to know what they're specifically, specifically going to be talking about March 10. Do you know what, what the plan is for March 10?
Yeah, so at the end of May, I invited folks from every site to a meeting to get feedback on all of the different elements of Tier One, PBIS. And from there, with getting site feedback and identifying what are those areas of Tier One? Because the feedback was, some of, our professional development model with Laura Moyman was some videos that were shared that our site administrators would share with their staff. And the feedback was, we need more direct contact. We need all of our, all of our sites listening to the same message. And so that's what led me to find a more local provider through Humboldt County, our, our regional provider, to say, listen, we need, we, we had this other provider. We're looking for someone, another partner that can do these, these trainings. And so from there, it was about affective statements, the restorative chat, sort of what can you do in your classroom? And then also, like, how do you respond to the behavior? And then also like, how do you respond to the behavior in the moment, right? So the simple correction sequence, so things that depending on if administrators had time in their staff meetings to input that, there was, in the feedback session, there were some gaps in what some staff, some staffs had been exposed to and what others had not been exposed to. So this was an effort to kind of bring, kind of bring us all up and have that same tier one strategies and practices, so we could say, yes, we, we did provide something to everyone and I based it on the feedback that I received in May.
I have a question, so. Is it all staff or is it secondary and elementary?
So elementary received one session in August. So it was just two sessions, one for, I'm sorry, one session each level. So every school would have an hour and forty-five minute session on culture and climate PBIS in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So elementary already had theirs and then secondary is scheduled for, for March 10.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this, and this was discussed in the continuous improvement committee, Maddie, you were saying?
It's, you know, it, it hasn't been discussed in terms of its effectiveness, no. But I think that it's always on the, you know, I think that going forward, I think there needs to be a discussion about it.
But I wanna honor the commitment that you've made, but also want to know like what Humboldt has said, like what will be a result of them providing this training? Are we gonna see teachers and staff interacting with students, especially our traditionally marginalized students differently? Are we gonna see, you know, the black students suspended at three times the rate that they actually are at the school? Like, are we going to see differences? So, cause we have so much segregation, just looking at those, those school reports, it's like, are we gonna see less of that? Like what, like what is the expectation of what we'll see? Because it's been, it was since my day was here, like it's been a couple of years. And so I guess I'm, I just wanna know what are the expectations of PBIS being implemented? Like at that second, at the secondary PD, so then when they go to the PD in March, like what should we be seeing as a result of that in terms of changes of the school climate? I know, I'm putting on the spot. But I'm just wondering like if maybe they can come to the next meeting and talk about that. Especially if they, if we wanna continue contracting with them, I wanna know, like, what are we gonna expect? Like, I will be honest, man, I was so mad today, just like reading the rest of these school accountability report cards, it's like predictable. I almost didn't even finish reading them, so I'm like, well, let me open up the next one, I know exactly what it's gonna say. You know? So it's like, what, it's like we're doing the same thing, you do need to do something different. So I would wanna hear what is their role gonna be in that, especially if we're paying them. I mean, I feel like, as Mel, you're probably an expert at this point in PBIS. No, for real, I mean, how many years have you been with the district?
This is my fourth year.
And you've probably been doing PBIS your whole time, you could probably, I'm so serious, like lead the PDs yourself.
Well, so that was my only job, but.
Just use their slides.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. That's why I'm doing the site visits, because Laura Moiman was doing them before, but to me, it's important for me to go out and work and, you know, and, and have those one-on-one meetings, because the things that I'm hearing is, you know, making sure that our staff feel like the loop is closed in terms of any kind of behavioral incidents. So there's a lot of pieces to this, and I think speaking to the equity part, PBIS is just one component, where we had culturally responsive pedagogy at our last, there, there's many layers and facets to our, our student's school experience. And so it's predicated on all of these things coming together and also transforming the hearts and minds of our educators and, and coming along with us. And so I appreciate the questions and, yeah, I think it's important.
Cause if we're just doing PBIS, but no one's hearts and minds are changing, what we spend six thousand dollars for, you know what I mean?
Transformational work for sure, yeah.
How do we measure people's hearts? Those are my questions, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table without a second. No, she made the motion.
Oh, I'll second.
Oh, okay. All right, all those in favor? All those oppose? All right, the motion passes. Good, good discussion.
So one point of clarification, do we, was all the contracts pulled off a consent, just PBIS?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't have my thing. I think so. We are going to action items, there were no public comments. Action item fifteen point one, point one, school accountability report card updates twenty twenty-four. Amanda.
Thank you. Each year, schools are required to submit a school accountability report card to provide parents in the community with key information about school performance. The SARC serves as a public reporting tool, offering data on indicators such as CASP results, demographics, and other school metrics. It allows community partners to evaluate and compare schools based on current and available data. While the SARC provides the data, the school plan for student achievement, or the SIPSA, serves as the guiding plan for school improvement. The SIPSA informed by the SARC will be presented for discussion at the next board meeting. SARC must be uploaded to the California Department of Education by February first. To ensure compliance with this requirement, we are requesting the board approves the SARC. And principals will be available at the next board meeting to answer any questions about the SARC or SIPSA.
All right, do I have a motion? No?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I know I said a lot already, but there are a lot of things that stood out, I won't go into every single one. There are a couple of things that popped up, just overall, I know a couple of years ago, we had asked for common math assessments. And we still don't have them, even though we were promised them two years ago. And I'm seeing the math achievement at the secondary rate just fall. And so how are we gonna serve these students, especially since we just went A through G, which added a year of math to our graduation requirements? So that, that was the first thing that really stood out. Also, like some of the proficiency for our EL students was zero percent. So, and I'll ask about this in future business, but I think we need to do a special study session about how we're serving or not serving our multilingual learners. Because also at that same school, we're seeing really high chronic absenteeism and suspension rates. So it's like, again, I mean, we all know, like if kids aren't feeling like they belong and welcomed and the, you know, all this. We talk about SEL, but if that was really happening, then we wouldn't see these school climate issues and this low academic achievement. But I think like the main thing that I wanna talk about is our alternative education. We have eighty-one students at San Antonio. I just wonder what's the capacity at that site? Like how many students could that school hold? I just, I should've asked that question earlier, but I just thought about that. And I'm asking because there, the other two sites, I shouldn't even call them sites, cause they're at Costa and Pedalum High, the other two programs, Carpe and Sonoma Mountain, only have twenty-four students each. And it's saying that the cost per student at Carpe is fifteen thousand and the cost per student at Sonoma Mountain is twenty-five thousand per student. Those schools also have a really high graduation rate and they're the whitest ones of our alt ed. And so it, again, it just looks like segregation, because then I look at San Antonio, that's only a third white and the graduation rate is thirty percent. Like that is like criminal. We have a school that has a twenty-nine percent graduation rate. That is awful. What do, like, I would never accept that as a parent. I would never send my kid to a school with a twenty-nine percent graduation rate and think that it was okay. And so I just look at that has a low graduation rate, these other schools have really high. Why can't we just bring them together and give all these kids the same services? It's all alternative education. But again, this is segregation, because the schools that are the wider ones were spending more per student. So, and I know that this is probably outside of the budget talk, but has there ever been discussion about us like consolidating those programs and how much money would that save? I know that was a lot. A question in there, so that's just part of the discussion of this.
Did you want me to speak to the capacity? All right, so as for the site capacity, later on this evening, I am bringing forward the contract for approval for a mobile modular to move the transition program to the Casa campus, which means in turn next year, there will be two portables at San Antonio that will not be in use. It's also my understanding that there is vacant, a vacant classroom there. So I do know that the site is not at capacity from a facility standpoint on the budget piece as part of the budget advisory committee, which I'll speak to a little bit later this evening. Part of the task that, or the task that we've been discussing is the two, specifically the two million dollars in reduction of funding that came from temporarily funded positions. So we haven't had any conversations around programming, like moving different programs or closing any classrooms or programs.
Yeah, I mean, cause we wouldn't want the, I mean, the classes wouldn't close, they would just move somewhere else, right? It would be, because we're not, I mean, the school is just like a modular on Casa and, is that right? And on Pedalum High campus?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Have anything about SARC? I do. But I, I will reserve most of this until the principals are here. And Tony's here. But I did want to definitely second what Joanna is saying. I noticed the same things, there's a lack of opportunity at all of those schools. There's no CTE, there, the results in almost every category, CASP, graduation rates, chronic absenteeism, student engagement, career technical education participation have all declined. And sometimes significantly. There was no data for graduation dropout rates, ELA, or math CASP scores for Sonoma Mountain. So I don't know why that wasn't there, that needs to be addressed. And there's no enrollment in CTE pathways. And yet, at both of these schools, students are released early. I think these are the students that CTE pathways are built for. And that it would keep them engaged hopefully and in school. So I think we need to, my request going forward, I mean, I totally respect the work that these teachers and staff do, it's a difficult, it's difficult, it's a small population, they're the kids that have not been successful most of the time in their education. So I really would like to start thinking about taking that alternative education committee, have them take on the task of looking into a reorganization, a reimagining of how we deliver our alt ed programs. It was initially supposed to be started that way and it, it's, doesn't appear like that's happening. There's new graduation requirements, A through G courses, ethnic studies and liter, and financial literacy are now state requirements. So all these things feed into the fact that we need to relook at these programs. And figure out what's working, what's not working, and then be able to change and adjust. So I just wanna make sure that our number one goal, which is all students, scholars will experience an excellent, diverse, equitable, and inclusive education is met. It, it's very striking at the alt ed, and so I don't, you know, I think there's trouble in lots of other areas. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just looking, sorry, I didn't realize that was so loud. I was just looking at the, the committees, right, that the trustees are on, and I see that Maddie and Joanna are on the alt ed task force. And so is.
With my work schedule.
Sure. So I just think there's an opportunity there, just as you were just saying, like if, if we wanna speak with the alternative ed teachers or the administrators and this could be an opportunity, right? This task force could be that and we have two trustees on it. So I think there's an opportunity there and we'll need to look at your schedule so that we can be sure that you can attend these meetings, cause both of you have, not that the other two haven't, but both of you brought up points around this, very specific points. So it, you know, rather than having necessarily a study session, let's just start at these alt ed meetings and bring some of these questions forward. I, I spent an hour today at San Antonio with Greg Stevenson and went and visited, you know, classrooms in the campus and I looked at the the virtual academy there and it felt great. And yet I hear numbers that don't seem to be in sync with what my own eyes saw on a campus where kids were engaged and the work was happening. So there's a disconnect somewhere and I just think that this committee might give us an opportunity to start digging deep in some of those questions that you, you have.
Well, I thought the committee was formed because we've had questions for a few years. Like I'm looking back at from last year and I don't know, we're asking the same stuff.
Well, we have a chance to move forward, so.
It was part of the reason that this was started and why Justin became the head of that committee. But I also, I totally agree with you in that there does seem to be a disconnect. What's going on on all those campuses is really wonderful in a lot of different ways. So I don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater, but whatever's going on is not really serving student achievement. And, and the graduation rates are not.
Give us an opportunity.
Yeah, and the inequity, when you have, you know, the difference, I mean, you can look at it and, at the percentages and it's pretty shocking.
I will say at a lot of student panels, when students at San Antonio speak, they are incredibly positive about their school, about their staff, more so than students from the regular high schools, which I always think is very interesting, but then you look at the numbers and you go, okay, you're, you, you know, the climate seems to be great. The student, teacher relationships are strong, so it's really confusing as to why they're so low. I, I don't, I don't, it, it boggles the mind.
Well, maybe they're part of the twenty-nine percent that are graduating. I don't, I mean, I'm being like a hundred percent serious, maybe they're part of the twenty-nine percent, like. I don't know. I just.
Also, not to make excuses, but I'm wondering if students, when they hit senior year, transfer back to Casa or Pedalum High? I have no idea. You know, I, it's all.
It's not usual, it's not usual anymore. At least that's what they said at the committee.
And if there's only eighty-one students, and forgive me if this has come up in all the committee meetings I have not attended, but it's like only eighty-one students, is there an opportunity to like look at each one? You know, or for someone to look at each one? Like I think of like your caseload as a counselor or any person, I don't know, and you just, you have a caseload, eighty students is not that many to like look at one by one and just see what's going on.
I will add that Justin, um, has been doing a deep dive into the profiles and the, and the graduation rates specifically there in under CSI because of the graduation rate. And, um, I know part of future business about a meeting or two ago was for the alt ed task force to come and do a presentation. So I would recommend that we do put that, um, on, on a future board meeting so that Justin can, um, along with Greg Stevenson can kind of share. There, there are some systemic things that needed to be changed and a lot of that work has already started. And so I would love for the board to be able to hear some of that work and then, um, hear some of the things that are, that are the things that will be happening, but it's an opportunity to ask some, some questions specifically about data and, um.
Yeah. I want to do something radically different. I want to keep doing this because this is what we did last year and the year before. And the, 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 the segregation's growing and the graduation rate is going down. So I am, I know I'm out of order, but I'm going to propose that we put them all together. I, I don't know.
Put what all together?
All the schools. San Antonio, Sonoma Mountain, Carpe.
So will that be future business?
I guess so.
Yeah. Okay. And, um, also I believe that one of the things that we're doing is that tonight we're just passing the, passing this and then there will be, it will be brought back at our February eleventh meeting. And we will have an opportunity and all of the principals will be here.
But that's the SIPSA, right?
Uh, we could bring this back, right?
The idea was to approve this tonight because it has to be done by February first, but at the February eleventh board meeting to have a discussion around the SARCs and the single plans for student achievement. Which kind of go hand in hand, really.
Yeah, like this should guide their SIPSA, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's like, it's just so that we can have discussion with the principals online.
What they gonna tell us different?
Huh?
What are they gonna tell us different?
Well, no, I'm just saying that if it, that we will be bringing it back then and then, uh, when we have the alt ed. Yes.
So, uh, I think it'd be helpful to provide specific staff direction on like next steps and hear what their thoughts are on how we can move forward. Um, on reviewing, yeah, uh, the proposal to, you know, merge of sites or some sort of analysis, deeper analysis on, on the locations.
My suggestion is you put the kids together and whatever you're giving to the kids at Carpe and Sonoma Mountain that they are able to graduate a hundred percent last year. I know that they have a large enough number this year and ninety percent due for the students that are only graduating at twenty-nine percent. That's what I'm suggesting. And stop the seg- the segregated schools and the different referral systems for these three schools. They have two different referral systems. It's a, if it's alternative education, they're all our students. And we really have that as a goal to provide, uh, equal educational opportunity for all the students. Then we need to do that and stop segregating them and giving them different experiences and then spending twenty-five thousand dollars on one of the sites first per child.
So I'm, I'm happy to connect with the alt ed task force. I, I don't exactly know who's on it. Um, but at least to, to start this conversation because I think that having the conversation with i- it's hard to have the conversation without those educators in the room just to, it's just hard. Because I'm a little bit out of context regarding what we want to do here. So I think that looking at the alt ed task force, there's, um, the next meeting is actually February thirteenth. Or looking at a time where both of our trustees can attend and at least start the conversation there. It's gonna start somewhere.
Well, we will definitely do it for, um, for future business, but we can't pass that tonight.
No, I know. I'm saying that is where that is how I feel as a person, a, 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 a parent of color, a person of color who is looking at these numbers. I'm sorry, but like where is our equity lens? Where is our culturally responsive lens? How can anyone look at this and be okay with it? And just be like, let's just keep doing the same thing in the committee.
Yeah.
Right.
We've been told that things were going to change for many years. And it just for me, like this is the most glaring.
I agree.
And then we're giving these families of color, this type of educational experience. That's just, it's not okay with me. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, you know, a- ask Amanda to me. I think we don't have Tony here tonight, but what would, I, 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 I hear clearly from one of my colleagues, um, that we want to look at this like in actual proposals and like what, what this would look like. The data of like, can what sites, what kind of combination? So whatever staff needs to start moving forward with that, like I think that's the direction to staff, like let's start moving forward and actually put together a proposal on what it would look like to merge the, the three alt education programs together.
You know, I, one thing that, that Carpe and Sonoma Mountain has that San Antonio doesn't is those students have access to the comprehensive high school. They can take classes there. They can participate in extracurriculars. And I think that's a hu- that's a, that's huge. So those students, if they want to take an AP class, can take it. If they want to take, get into a CTE, they can do that. Whereas at San Antonio, they do not have that option and there's no CTE there, which to me is unforgivable. So, I mean, we need, kind of need to look at that and see what are these, what are the, these two smaller schools have that San Antonio does not. So.
Sorry, um, I wanted Esmeralda to just let me know that the SIPSS do not actually come until May. So we can bring back the SARCs alone and ask the principals to come to the next meeting. We'll do it as a discussion item to continue the conversation on that piece of it. And then, um, you would like for us to work on a plant, start a proposal on what it could look like to merge the, potentially the three schools. Um, what do Sonoma Mountain and Carpe have that is currently missing from San Antonio? Things like CTE. Um, do you want us also looking at capacity at, um, San Antonio, San Antonio only, or if these pro- a program could be at one of our other comprehensive sites? Not saying there's room.
All good questions.
Yes. If there's twenty-four students at each site right now, it's Carpe and Sonoma Mountain, and if we can't put them all on the San Antonio campus again to save money, um, and to give the same opportunities and yeah, do we have either room at Carpe or Sonoma Mountain for the students? For some of the students to go there instead?
Jason?
I'd, I'd also recommend that we bring to you some information as you were saying, Joanna, about the referral process because I, I, um, I mean, that this last year we worked with Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain as we were in this weird transition. And it appears like there's a different referral process, as you were saying. I think that, um, probably has something to do with the differences you're seeing in the demographics on the report, on the SARC.
Did you say even within the committee, they couldn't explain that?
I, I'm saying that you're asking for some information. I would recommend that we also bring some information on that if you're wondering kind of what the differences are between, between the different programs. Um, I think it would be interesting to see, I, in, in my interactions with the team there last year, I, I don't believe that, that the teachers there, because we have four teachers that teach at those two schools. Like it's two on one day and two, and then they switch. So it's the same four teachers teaching all the kids at those two schools. And when I, we were talking with them, as I recall, so I think we should probably, I don't believe, even though they have access to those classes, I don't think there's a lot of interplay between the, um, those sites and the comprehensive sites. So I know we were talking about that with them, but I don't think in actuality, there's a lot of students taking advantage of that feature that you're mentioning, Ellen.
Do they know they have that opportunity?
I, I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
It's in, it's in the report.
I know it's in the report.
CTE signups.
Well, no, and I, I know that, but I'm just wondering if the students at these, at the two little satellite schools know that they can enroll in classes at the comprehensive and if the counselors enroll them or.
But only if the bell schedule matches up, right? Like.
Oh, yes. You know, that's the other thing that they need to look at is, uh, the way that the school is, the bell schedule for the alternatives. Besides, particularly, well, I don't know whether particularly, but certainly at Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain, they get out at, I think, twelve-thirty. So, you know, they could, I don't know. They could take a class, I suppose. I don't even know how that works. Um, but they, they are eligible to take, to be in athletics. And I think that's another, uh, thing that's a, you know, a driving force there. But the referral service would also refer to what you're talking about, Ellen.
Well, yeah, and according to the SARC, um,
according to the SARC from, I think it was Carpe Diem, they talked about the ability for students to take classes as well as participate in extracurriculars. So I don't know if that's happening or not, but, um, they claim they have that ability in their SARC.
I, at this point, I would recommend that we do a study session because it's, it's not going to be, it's a bigger topic than just covering it at, at our regular board meeting. So I think that you've given staff some direction around your interest on this. And I think that we look for a date to, um, have a study session. And I would talk to cabinet about what they recommend for next steps, but I think it's too big of a conversation to have at a, as one item. It should be its only item, I think, at, at a board meeting. So, you know, and Tony isn't here, obviously he will have a lot to say and he's a lot of thinking, I'm sure on this, as do the administrators and the teachers and the other support staff. So I think that that may be our best option moving forward unless the board wants to give us different direction.
I hear that, but what would be the point of the study session, I guess?
I think it's important for staff and the principals to be able to answer some of the questions or be able to give the board feedback on, teachers too, on what it's like on the ground. So just have us have a better understanding of their programs and you can add, like I can't answer some of the questions you're asking. I don't know those answers and you know, I think that the site staff are going to be the best to have that conversation. So I think that a study session allows us to get some questions answered and also allows the staff to present their programs that we may not know the intricacies of, that I certainly don't know the intricacies of.
Okay. Okay. Are we?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna approve, but I just want to. That was never a question.
We have to vote.
We have a motion on the table and we have a second. Do I have a vote on approval of a school accountability report card updates twenty-twenty-four? All those in favor, aye? All those opposed? No opposed? The motion passes. Uh, next on the, um, action items are overnight field trip requests. Once again, are you doing this, Amanda, for Tony?
I am. So tonight we bring forward, um, four requests for overnight field trips. Two are to sixth grade camp. Um, one is to national, uh, for Casa to go to the nationals for cheerleading and for students to go to Disneyland. Um, we are working on a new form and, um, these came through on the old form. So we will continue to work on the board's request.
Okay, do, uh, do we have any?
I move to approve the field trips.
Um, do we have, okay, a second? Second? Okay, and do we have any discussion about these field trip requests?
Okay, um, the cheerleader one, just one thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars per student. And they say, it says, it's very tiny. Prepaid by fundraiser. I'm just kind of curious about the kind of fundraising they do and how do the advisors deal with kids that can't, that can't afford it? Is there, because it just, it, it seems to me, and maybe this is just me, but that a kid that wants to go on a field trip but knows their parents can't afford it might be hesitant to ask for that kind of help. So I'm not really sure how that happens. Because on every single one, it says, no student. You know, inclusion of all students. So.
So I do know that, um, Tony has been reaching out to the sites or the people filling out the field trip forms, um, and also from the ones that were approved at the last meeting to make sure that, um, the fundraising and the donations that are being requested, um, don't have any basis for the students that are being, going on the trip and making sure that, um, all students can attend regardless of that. So it is something that he, we've been reaching out to the sites about. For the prepaid for the cheer, um, it's my understanding that they started fundraising like a year before a time and, um, I can come back on what types of fundraisers. I'm not really sure specifically in Petaluma, what type of fundraisers are happening, but I'm more than happy to find out.
It's not so much the type, it's the outreach for students that can't afford it and how that works. Because I imagine some students would be very embarrassed.
Yeah. So I believe this is the team that goes, you, they all have a, a part in the, um, competition. So I, it's my understanding that it's for the whole team to go. So probably some families are able to help more than others.
So I think, uh, this is related to having been qualified to attend, um, this national championship. And so, um, you know, that's one of the reasons they're asking for it because they qualified for it.
I understand that. I'm just wondering about the outreach for students that can't afford it, you know, and I know that they fundraised and they got donations and that's great. Um, it's a lot of money. So I was just curious.
And so it's sixty thousand dollars for Disneyland.
I know, my God.
Okay, uh, we have a motion on the table, I believe. To, did we move?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of approving the overnight field trip requests, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No opposition? Uh, the action item passes. All right, now we have our resolution two four two five dash two seven declaring the month of February as Black History Month. Yes. Um, would I, would anybody like to read this? Before we read it? I thought that we changed the protocol. No, it doesn't. But anyway, um, so I need a motion to pass approval of resolution two four two five dash two seven.
A motion.
Second. Okay. Uh, would someone like to read this? Would you like to read it?
Whereas Black History Month is celebrated every February as a tribute to the achievements of Black Americans who have shaped American history. From sixteen nineteen to the election of the first black president and vice president, the US, United States of America in two thousand and eight and twenty twenty, respectively, and beyond. And whereas Black Americans have played a pivotal role in the history and shaping of America and their contributions should never be understated or marginalized. And whereas Black Americans have been pivotal in the creation of a massive number of inventions and are recognized for achievements in education, social services, public safety, health, business, fine arts, entertainment, science, politics, law, engineering and technology. And whereas Black Americans have continually enriched and contributed to our society through their longstanding commitment to resilience, justice, equality, civil rights and economic and social equality for all. And whereas Black history is a part of American history and as educational leaders, we have a responsibility to educate students about the role and contribution of Black Americans in history throughout the entire year, including embracing aspects of Black American history that are all too often ignored. And whereas the history social science framework for California public schools, kindergarten through grade twelve states that the history curriculum of community, state, region, nation and world must reflect the experiences of people of different racial, religious and ethnic groups. groups and must be integrated at every level. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. Now therefore be it resolved that Petaluma City, Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District's Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to recognize Black History Month, honor the contributions of Black Americans, support the educational attainment of Black students, and support the professional success, oops, of Black staff members.
Excellent. All right. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion passes. All right, we are going on to Resolution 2425-28 declaring the month of January as Board of Education Recognition Month.
Okay, I get to do this one. But first, we're going to have a little video montage for our trustees for your viewing pleasure.
What is a board of education?
Does it object people? Um, I don't know what you're talking about. A flower? Do they work annoying years?
That's a good question. I think it might be a subject like math, maybe, and science and language arts. A board with education on it?
Hmm.
What does education mean?
I don't know.
It's a board where it shows like, it's like it shows education, thankfully. Well, that's at least one, I think.
A picture of a board of everyone in the school?
Something that helps the kids.
Tell me again, what do you think a trustee does?
Yes.
Teachers?
They eat food.
I think it's like a pot of some sort.
That's good. What kind of pot?
I don't know, just like one of those pots.
Blacks?
Oh, a whole lot of them?
I think they help people.
I think a trustee does, like, they're trusted with something, like, they have a very important job and they have to be, like, more mature and they have to be, like, trusted to do that job.
I think, uh, it helps people write and stuff.
Somebody that's over silly!
Miss Fidaji?
Somebody that trusts you.
Yeah.
Climb a tree.
Do they pick up garbage?
They take everybody on a clipboard.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias para todo que haces.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Gracias!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you to Amy and Bree for their video work there. It was adorable. And just on a little bit more of a serious note, the work you do is hard and that was demonstrated tonight, right? And you're working to do what's best for every student in your care. And it's an opportunity for us to recognize you tonight. I'll read this resolution, but it's also gratitude for all the hard work you do because it doesn't end. It is, you all have full-time work that you do in one way or another, and this is on top of all of that, so we are grateful. And our resolution tonight is a resolution of the Board of Education of Petaluma City School Elementary and Petaluma Joint High School District, Petaluma City Schools declaring the month of January as Board of Education Recognition Month. Whereas California has designated January as Board of Education Recognition Month, a time set aside to recognize the contributions of boards of education and school boards to the academic, social, emotional, physical, and mental health needs of students. And whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life for all California citizens and communities. And whereas school board trustees advocate for the students in our community to thrive. And whereas local school board, school district board members are committed to students and believe that all students can be successful learners and that the best, and the best education is tailored to the individual. And whereas public schools serve to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world is more poignant than ever before. And whereas the PCS Board of Education is dedicated to improving access to inclusive, equitable, high-quality education by helping create thriving learning environments for students. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District's Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to recognize January as Board of Education Recognition Month. Thank you for your service.
I don't think we had a, a move, we didn't move this, did we? Do we have a motion? No.
A motion to approve the resolution.
All right. Second. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, the motion passes and thank you. That was really, really sweet. Good reminder. All right, business services, Amanda. Approval of Resolution 2425-29 authorizing contract for Mobile Modular Management Corporation for portable classrooms utilizing the Piggyback Statute.
I move to approve.
I think she was going to enter, oh, sorry.
That's okay. Tonight we bring forward Resolution Number 2425-29 which authorizes and approves a contract with Mobile Modular Management Corporation for portable classrooms. This agreement totaling $732,607.92 will be funded through secondary district developer fees. The district is leveraging the Piggyback Statute under Public Contract Code Section 20118, which allows us to utilize an existing contract procured by Santa Rita Union School District. By doing so, we avoid the delays of competitive bidding while ensuring compliance with procurement laws. District staff have reviewed the Piggyback Contract's terms and pricing and we confirmed reasonable costs. This approach provides an efficient and cost-effective solution for acquiring DSA-approved portable classrooms to meet our needs. One thing I did want to note, this is for the modular classrooms to go to Casa Grande for the transition program. When I brought the contract for the architects to the board about a month or two ago, it was our understanding that we would only need three portable, portables to meet the needs of the students. After meeting with, excuse me, the Director of Student Special Services and Classroom Teachers and Sandra Larson, we learned that we could not meet all of their needs within the three classrooms and we really needed the fourth building in order to provide room for additional toilets and a kitchen and room for laundry. This will also give us room for growth and will allow for some types of small offices to be added to that fourth building.
Any questions to Amanda? Hearing no questions, I need a motion.
Sorry, I'm a little late to this. So Amanda, can you confirm on the, on the Piggyback, since we are using, can you confirm that the other school district went through a full RFP process and then it is in your experience and expertise that this is a fair market value for these buildings?
Yes, the school district did go through the full RFP process as confirmed by our legal firm at DWK, and we do believe that this is a fair price. The price was a little lower than we originally anticipated.
Thank you.
With adding the extra building?
No, the, sorry, the, the price per building came in lower than we anticipated, so it went up quite, uh, $250,000 to add the fourth building.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I need a, a motion to approve Resolution 2425-29.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Now we go to approval of McKinley Modular Classrooms Manufacturing and Installation Contract.
Thank you. Tonight we bring forward the contract with JL Construction to manufacture and install two permanent modular classroom buildings at McKinley Elementary School. The need for these additional classrooms arises from the growth in attendance due to transitional kindergarten and kindergarten programs. McKinley currently only has one kindergarten classroom with a rest, with restroom access, which cannot accommodate two kindergartens and one or more TK, TK classes. The proposed modular classrooms in the kindergarten area will address this need cost-effectively by going with modulators and not stick build. This also allows for a quicker process. We anticipate that the modulators will be done in late summer, early fall, at the latest, which is super nice. Also, JL Construction is the construction company that did the modulators at Peng Grove Elementary. The delays that we had with that project and some of the issues that we've had had nothing to do with the construction company itself. The delays were with our sites and with DSA and some decisions that we made as a district. So we are excited to have the opportunity to work with JL Construction on another project. And so they were the lowest responsive bid at $1,998,000.
Excellent. Okay, any questions?
I'm just excited because it's been coming up for years, office hours and just in general, so really exciting, thank you.
Will this also be paid for through developer fees or?
That is a great question. We are using, this is one of the last projects for the elementary 2020, 2014 bond.
Fabulous. Okay, great. That's how long it's been since we needed this. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the McKinley Modular Classrooms Manufacturing and Installation Contract?
I move to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none? We have approved, yay, the contract. Okay. So now we are going on to discussion, comments from the public on discussion item. Seeing none? We will go on to discussion item 17.1. Sorry, 17.2.1 update on the Budget Advisory Committee. Oh, God, I didn't have that. We are going to discussion information only for 17.2.1 update on Budget Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Tonight I wanted to provide a quick update. At the last board meeting, I gave an update on the, where we were with the Budget Advisory Committee, and I anticipated that the committee was going to have a full vote at the last meeting. There was a lot of good conversations and the committee wanted a little bit more information and time to really understand the, the decision that they are making. So we decided to have one more meeting, which will be tomorrow night. This timeline still allows for us to, or for me to take the recommendation of the committee to Cabinet and the superintendent and to the board by the, for the February 11th board meeting.
Any questions? I have a question about the timeline. I've been getting some, I, I just need to be clarified. So I was wondering if we were going to be voting on it that night of the February 11th or if it was going to be for discussion so that then we can kind of ask questions and digest it before the February 25th meeting.
Thank you, that is a great question. We discussed this in Cabinet and we are doing it a little different this year than last year. It came as part of the resolutions was the first time that the board saw the positions that were recommended for elimination. So our plan is to bring the recommendation from Cabinet to the next meeting in order for the board to have the discussion and vote on those positions. The resolution will then follow for the actual elimination of, and the PKSes at the February 25th meeting. So it will be done over two meetings to give time to have the discussion and then if you need for us to provide any additional information at the next board meeting.
Okay, I need a little clarification on that. So what would we be, exactly would we be voting on? It's not the final list?
It would be, so the, the recommendation will be the, the final, could be the final list. So yes, the board will vote at the next board meeting on if you want to move forward with the positions that the cabinet is recommendation, recommending for elimination. The difference is, is that we are bringing it forward, the meeting before the resolution. So they will be brought back again one more time, final, as part of the resolutions.
So that means that it could be changed between those two meetings?
Yes.
Depending on what the discussion is?
Yes. It won't become final until, not even final, when the resolution is approved at the second. So the final decision needs to be made once the board approves the resolution in February by May 30?
March 15?
No, the final, so it comes back again in May. Yeah, so, yes.
Is it May?
May 14.
May 14th. Yeah. So that's when it would become final.
Thank you very much. I did not know that. Go ahead, Jason.
So I, just to clarify, so that like the, with regards to the layoff process, which this feeds into that, we bring, we bring the list of positions to you and then we notify before May 5, March 15th, and we notify any employees that are affected that, by that, by March 15th. And then we finalize it by, before May 14th. So there, there could be, there could be positions and employees that are notified in March, and then we could at a later time decide not to move forward on that before May 14th. That, that happens sometimes, so, so there's this two. That's, that happens sometimes. So, um, so there's this two-step process, but we've got a. We're going to be making sure that we get these, the timeline of the recommendations from, that come from, uh, the Budget Advisory Committee and Cabinet. That has to come in. You need to make decisions of that with enough time for us to act before the March 15th deadline.
Excellent. Thank you. And doesn't the governor's revise come out May 15th?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Um, okay, that's.
I, I do have a question about the timeline. So, you know, we're going to get this list on the 11th. To discuss. And then when we are just like, we don't like this list. So then we have two weeks to, but then how do we decide? You know, because we have to hold to the Brown Act. You know what I'm saying? Like if we have discussion on the 11th? And we don't want to move forward with that list, then how do we address on the 25th? Do we potentially have another meeting?
It, um, it would be addressed on the 11th when we were discussing it before it went to approval.
Okay.
If, yeah.
May I intervene? So Jason, you were saying that we 100% need a, approved list by March. Fifteen.
So to be, yeah, thank you for that question. So to really be clear, like, uh, we have a board meeting. The board should give me clear direction by, um, the February 25th meeting. Because there's a lot of moving parts. Now, we do have, technically, we have another. Board meeting on March 11th, which still gives us a, a narrow window with which to act, but that should be reserved for if there's. One or two little charge change, little changes, little emergent, like those kind of positions, the bulk of any, any notifications I have to give to staff. We should be clear about by that, um, February twenty, um, 25th meeting. So that we have enough time to work with our staff in a way that's respectful, you know, respectful.
Okay. And we had a question, um, if there was a delay, like we needed more information. Could we call a special meeting for the first week in March?
Uh, I want to say sure. Yeah. I mean, we absolutely could. I'm looking at Jason just because of the timing is.
I know that is.
But you're saying, I understand you saying. We couldn't come to consensus or whatever it may be. Could we add another meeting in there?
I know it's not recommended.
No, no, I mean, like technically, like you're the board, so you could tell me on March 11th, you know, and then say, get it done. It, it just, it's, it's a really tough, like there's a lot of moving parts. Um, if we have, if we have, um, classified positions, there's a lot of complicated bumping rights with our classified staff and all that. So the more time that we have, the better we, the better job we can do in supporting our staff through that transition. So the answer is yes, we could do that, do it at the first week in March in a special meeting. But the sooner that we get that information, the better it is for us.
I hear you. So I, I share my, 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 uh, fellow members' concern on being shown information. You know, a little bit prior, the public only have, um, one week also, um, and many, many won't notice till a few days prior. To comment on decisions that are going to impact, you know, their schools, um, and their kids, um, and education success. So, you know, I would like for the agenda to be, to be published as, you know, early as possible. Um, and then let's keep it in the back of our heads that we do have the opportunity. If we do need more information, if we do need to do more public outreach, we do have an opportunity to call a, a special meeting that still. Is not as helpful, but still allows you to, uh, two weeks prior, you know, roughly speaking, 10 days prior.
Yeah, yeah, we will be able to get it done.
Um, so then, um, going on that. Um, ideally. We, you'd be bringing, um, the recommendation on February 11th. And then we would discuss it and at that time we could possibly amend it?
Yes.
And so, um, that kind of would alleviate the need. So you really need the. What you'd like to do is have all of that work done on the 11th so that by the time the resolution comes to us. It's, it's pretty firm.
Yes. And just to be clear, a resolution can be amended in open session by vote two, um, on the 25th. So, and approved, just like other things are amended. So doing it this way, it does give more opportunity, opportunity for discussion. And, um, the cabinet, how to move forward. On there for the 25th, but still allows for more discussion on the 25th with hopefully final approval. And if that doesn't work, a special board meeting.
So the first meeting in February would be a discussion item? And then the second meeting would be an action item?
So our ask is that we are given direction at the February 11th meeting. Or approval.
So will this, how do we take into account? I mean, I know I just threw it out there. I'm not a voting member of the Budget Advisory Committee. But then how do we take into account? Considering any type of changes to our alternative education programs?
That is a great question. So one of the ways that we could look at that is, um. Budget advisory and cabinet come up to the magic number of $2 million. We're going down this process. We have until May 14th for the final decision. Um, at the same time, the conversation about the alternative education. Could be going on and the cost savings, if there was one, if any action was taken. If it was before March 14th, then when, before it came back for final approval. Some, if it was $200,000, $200,000 of the 2 million can then be retracted and those positions can be brought back. Um, or if it's later on in the year, if this doesn't happen till June, it just. Really where we would see the impact, it wouldn't be on the savings of these eliminated positions. But overall, on the financial picture of the district in July.
So it's possible. Hopeful.
Sorry, I know we've had.
No, you don't do not, no, 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 no.
I know we've had so many things happen this.
You're totally in the right.
This school year, but I really just, I mean, we've seen like a, a neighboring county. I'll just call it out, Marin City, Sausalito. I mean, they had a desegregation order like three years ago, four years ago. And I'm just like, oh, is this any different? So I know it feels kind of last minute, but also it's a huge concern as well. And we're just moving farther and farther apart from integrated schools.
I think we've had the conversation about the inequity between these schools many times. So it's not a last minute.
I really think that they can run parallel and still end up with, um. If there was a cost savings that wanted to be used to not have to eliminate so many positions. There, there would be time for that to work out too. I, I don't think that this is a position that a decision needs to be made. Before February 25th. Probably can't be.
And hopefully it would give the, who runs, do you run the alternative? I'm so bad, I haven't even come. I don't even know who runs them. It would get, would it also give the Alternative Education Committee time to talk it over or take these things into consideration as well? Are you just nodding yes just to be nice?
No.
Because it's our month. It's actually my month times two. I mean, I get January and February.
Yeah, Justin Moore, he leads our Alternative Task Force Committee with my support and assistance and Tony is also supporting.
Okay.
Thank you. Had some questions, serious questions. So, uh, thank you for the clarification. Um, now we have an update. Thank you, Amanda. It's Amanda Show. Uh, update on the governor's budget.
This time I do have a presentation. I'll just get, oh, perfect. Thank you, Dave. That's okay. All right. So, um. We attended the School Services puts on the presentation of the governor's January budget. Myself, Jason, and our labor partner Sandra and Patty. Attended along with our new director of budget and accounting, Helen. And, um, one of the great things that School Services does is they provide a kind of a board-ready presentation. This may feel a little long. I want you to know I took out half of the slides. So remember that. At least half. So this is 13 slides of highlights. All right. So the governor's proposed budget for the 25, 26 fiscal year has been released. Offering critical insights to state funding allocations for education. This budget directly affects the financial planning and resource distribution of Petaluma City Schools. Including funding for programs, staffing and operational needs. I want to note that this is a working budget proposed by the governor with limited new allocations with an emphasis on stability. Uh, and that the democratic super majority remains unchanged in California. This will continue to guide our state policies for next year. As we review this proposal, we want to consider two significant factors. The devastating impacts of the recent fires on local communities, um, specifically in LAUSD or LA. The county of LA is, would be, if it was its own country, the 22nd largest country in the nation. So the impact that that will have on our California's budget for next year, um, we're waiting to see. And, um. Also the uncertainty around the federal reimbursements for key programs and initiatives. There's been a lot of information that was released yesterday by our new administration on freezing some of our, freezing federal funding. We don't know right now if any of that will impact our budget. Though, um, only we receive about three and a half percent of our annual budget is in federal funding. So where it's not a large percentage, it still is over $6 million a year. So both of these factors will play a critical role in shaping how we plan for financial stability and flexibility in the upcoming year. Governor Newsom's budget proposal was released just one day before. The natural disasters, the fires. So everything that is presented on these slides. Now we may see major changes when we come to the May revision. Though the proposal emphasized stability and resilience, um, it focuses on protecting California's residents and the state economy. It, it seeks to address the growing demand for essential services in a state facing increasing affordability challenges. While stable proposition 98 funding is a highlight, the proposal underappropriates. The 24, 25 minimum guarantee by 1.6 billion dollars. This raises concerns about long-term education funding. Despite these challenges, the budget prioritizes core instruction and learning. Making the project, the protection of Prop 98 dollars vital for maintaining high-quality education and student services. California's economy continues to grow, but there. There are mixed signals about the future. Inflation remains persistent and the slowing of the Federal Reserve rate reduction is impacting key sectors. Key sectors such as housing. The budget projects a $17 billion surplus, supported by strong reserves and assumptions of steady national growth. However, significant risks remain, including changes in federal tariffs and immigration policies. Again, the fires have created this uncertainty as the state determines the scope of recovery efforts and federal reimbursements. One of the things that we might, um, start hearing about is the possibility of deferrals in funding for next year. So that's, um, one of the things between the impacts of the fires. LA County has postponed the taxes, um, reporting. And that will have a huge impact, um, on our budget.
Do you know, I, I don't want to interrupt your.
Nope, you're fine. I should have asked if I should stop at each slide.
Oh, no, I, I just was wondering, while I have it in my brain. There was, uh, uh, the, the governor or the legislature had just approved. The billions, can't remember the exact amount, um, for the LA fire recovery. And, um, because they're not sure what's going to happen from the federal government. I was just wondering if that was broken down at all, if there was any, um, indication of. How much money from that would be the minimum guarantee, part of the minimum guarantee or is it at all? I was just wondering if there were any details about it.
Um, I don't have a lot, a lot of details, but the, the part about the Prop 98 minimum guarantee. Is that a certain percentage of the state's budget has to go to education. So we will, it might put us in a different test. I think we're looking more at budget shortfalls with the tax receipts coming in late. Maybe we don't have the revenue and when we are at our enacted budget, the. Col, the COLA could go down or the per funding of discretionary, I'll touch on some of the one-time discretionary funding that we, we may not see. Um, we could see it like that, or as I said previously, we could see cash deferrals. Um, a couple of years ago, when there were large, the disasters were up here closer to the North State, that is what we saw. Luckily, the state was able to pay the deferrals, um, within months of the, I think they were all paid by August or September. Though we didn't think that they would be paid until December. So more information will come, then, um, it's one of the importances of making sure that we have a healthy cash reserves or fund balance. So in the anticipation that we do see deferrals from the state, we can meet our financial obligations. All right. Speaking of Prop 98. Okay. Except for, I apologize, I didn't even talk to, got ahead of myself. So, um. As Cal, California's economy continues to grow, there are mixed signals about. Sorry, the future. The, completely lost my place. Give me one second. Yep. Okay. Yeah. I was trying to beat it in. All right. Prop 98 stands out as a key component of the governor's budget. It eliminates reliance on one-time funding to support ongoing costs such as the local control funding formula. And also it fully funds the cost of living adjustment. Additionally, the budget provides one-time discretionary resources to help local agencies manage rising costs and liabilities. However, there is a concern that the state continues to meet only the minimum funding obligation. Highlighting the importance of protecting proposition $98 to ensure. Schools can deliver core instruction and vital services to students. All right. The big three taxes, the governor's revenue projection for 25, 26. Are higher than both the enacted budget and the LAO fiscal outlook. The key highlights include the corporation taxes reached a peak in 24, 25. Due to temporary measures such as tax credit and net operating loss deduction limits. The personal income tax is projected to grow by 3.6%. And corporation taxes are forecasted to be 2.2% higher than previously estimated. This increased revenue outlook supports the budget stability. But this is where we really expect to see some changes with the wildfires. The proposition, um, 98 minimum guarantee is increasing by 3.9 billion dollars. Due to higher than expected general fund revenues in current year. The governor proposes appropriating 117.6 billion dollars where he falls 1.6 billion dollars below. The calculated guarantee of 119.2 billion dollars. The, this underfunding has raised some questions about, um, if it's constitutional. If it's unconstitutional. by the Proposition 98 guarantee. So this is something that we are paying a lot of attention to, to see where this $1.6 billion is going to land. In school services and CASBO and all of the organizations that really focus on our school funding have already been reaching out to the state. So I anticipate that this will be corrected by the May revision. So our Local Control Funding Formula, or LCFF, for the 2526 incorporates a 2.43% cost-of-living adjustment. I do want to note that this is a half of a percent lower than the state's enacted budget in July. So, which we've been using the enacted budget for our multi-year projections for our budget and our first interim. So we will see now at second interim, a decrease of COLA of a half of a percent. Other than that, the COLA is on many programs. You can see with our grade span adjustment. I did want to note that right now the TK add-on is nearly doubled at $6,404. This is to help offset the cost of next year. It is mandated that we have to go to a 10 to 1 ratio instead of the 12 to 1. All right, in the 2223 fiscal year, approximately $4.3 billion of staffing expenditures were funded using one-time emergency resources, accounting for 6% of the statewide workforce. This reliance on temporary funding highlights the importance of assessing and planning for the expiration of these resources. Districts are advised to evaluate positions funded through one-time allocations and decide whether to reduce or eliminate roles, or transition them to ongoing funding sources. Failure to address these could create operational challenges and financial strain as emergency funding is no longer available. So this was really highlighted at the budget. A lot of districts are facing exactly what we were just speaking of, of with all of these one-time, but all of this one-time funding. Districts chose to hire temporary employees, and then over three to five years, regardless of how long you've had them, you learn how invaluable positions are within a district. And really, so it's highlighting the importance of us needing to go back to, we're back to our pre-pandemic funding levels, and our staffing should reflect that. We've been hovering near the really high 89% of our operating budget is staffing, and we should be closer. Most districts are between 85 and 87%. That was the slide for that. All right, so as we prepare for the 2526 budget, I want to acknowledge that some of the one-time funds included in the governor's proposal could be, could be serving as placeholders. So we anticipate the fully funded COLA, but we do wonder if there was discussion of the Learning Loss Recovery Block Grant additional funding. Will we receive the additional add-ons for TK? It is in this state, this year's budget, the mandate to go to 10 to 1, if it's funded or not. So up until this year, the governor said we would only go to 10 to 1 if there was additional funding to offset the costs in our enacted budget. The ratio for next year is 10 to 1 regardless if we receive additional LCFF add-ons. We expect to see another form of a discretionary block grant, and there was also a focus on literacy and mathematics coaches. And there are new screen, screening requirements that start next year for dyslexia. And then one of the other conversations that we are seeing that the districts that have a higher percentage of 55% of unduplicated pupil count would need to serve all students with their ELOP funds. We, if, it will really be interesting to see, the first read is that is by district, that could change to sites. So we do have sites that are over 55% unduplicated, and we have sites that are under. And what that would change is, is right now, we only serve, we only are required to serve the students who qualify for our ELOP programs. I don't think that there's going to be a lot of changes in funding, but it will be the amount of students served could change. This is the School Services Financial Projection DART Board that we use for all of our planning factors. As noted earlier, we do see a change to COLA next year. And, and right now, an increase to our transitional kindergarten funding add-ons. We're monitoring proposed discretionary block grants and initiatives like the literacy and math coaches, which will be, once again, temporary funding sources. We need to remain cautious treating one-time funds as temporary solutions rather than guaranteed support. Planning for flexibility will be critical, especially around more program-specific information becomes available during the budget refinement process. The state budget process for 2526 begins with the release of the governor's January proposal and progresses through several key phases before its final adoption in June. In late January, legislative overview hearings commence on both the Senate and the Assembly, followed by detailed budget subcommittee hearings during the winter and spring. These hearings allow for review, discussion, and adjustments to the proposed budget. In May, the governor releases the May revision, which incorporates updated revenue and expenditure projections based on the latest economic data. Final subcommittee hearings are held in late May, and reports are presented to the full Senate and Assembly in early June. The process concludes with negotiations among leaders and the governor, resulting in the final approval of the 2526 state budget. Though we will adopt our budget before the governor does, so we will use the May revision to guide our budget development. And this DART, the DART Board that I previously showed from here on out. If we see major changes from the May revision to the enacted budget, we would need to submit what is called a 45-day budget revision. That is, if our, if there's a decrease to our revenue that is considered material, or an increase to our expenditures that are considered material. In this year's enacted budget, one of the things that we saw was, previously, you could lay off classified staff members for different reasons, and you could do it as part of the layoff process. When the budget was enacted, if you laid somebody off for other than specific funding or for need, so like if you reduced hours or did something like that, it was actually in the enacted budget that you needed to bring those staff members back. It didn't affect us, but just because we make all of these decisions along the way for our July 1 budget, it doesn't mean that legislation won't change, and it could, we may have to pivot with what our budget looks like. Questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Kind of random, but you know, we'll just stick with that for this meeting. So due to the wildfires, I know that, you know, as, as people look to settle somewhere else, there had, just in my day job, there has been a lot of communication around, you know, districts just being ready to serve students who are displaced by fires and may likely fall under McKinney-Bento, which would likely expend everyone's funds, since you set aside enough for what you're anticipating for your current students. So I'm just wondering if we've seen an increase currently? And/or how do we plan for something like that? And if the governor has talked about not just giving money, you know, for relief efforts in LA, but also across the state as people seek refuge. I know that was a long question.
No, those are great questions. To your first point, I would be cautious on any sort of planning for our federal funds, which at this point, just, you know, right now, we're going to budget moving forward as is. So I would not anticipate an increase to those funds for that piece. I happen to attend, I am on the board of, or I will be in March today was my, or yesterday was my orientation, for CASH Board of Directors, which is the Coalition for Adequate School Housing. And this actually, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this, having districts prepare for the influx of students, because not only last count, six elementary schools had burned to the ground, but, and this number is very outdated, I'm sure it is far more, but the last I read, there were over 16 houses, 16,000 houses that were lost. And nowhere really, there's not extra housing around. So the anticipation is that people that can stay in California may migrate to other communities. So I think that as we are looking at our enrollment for next year and our space and where we place classrooms, we want to make sure that we're keeping that in mind, that we could see an increase likely. It would, it will start soon, so we may have an idea of what that looks like. We're also working with the CDE on establishing a list of additional resources, if it's furniture, if it's modulators, for districts that are seeing growth faster than they can account for, in order, other districts will give their resources. Palm Beach Unified is going through a whole remodel on their furniture. And so what they did is they have contained, like shipping containers, where they are storing all of their furniture, ready to give it out to any district. So not only the districts that are affected by the fires, but any district that is affected by increased enrollment. So I think starting the conversation now and early and looking at really how we can best utilize our, each school site where we have room for grade spans, and trying to keep families together because they, yeah.
Good question. Any questions, Ryan?
Just more of a comments of other briefings I've gotten on the state budget. We have, the assumption is, you mentioned that the governor has a $17 billion surplus because of kind of creating a two-year budget last year to prevent major cuts. That is pretty much accounted for, and then any, anything that's reserved goes into the rainy day fund. So other people have said, like, there is no surplus, it is flat. So that is one other interpretation. My question is, have we in the past sent a letter of like support or a request to our state legislators on, on the issue like on Prop 98? We are lucky to have a fantastic leader who's a former school board member herself. We actually have two, Senator McGuire, who's a pro temp, and David Conley. I think they, you know, would like hearing from us if we have thoughts on Prop 98. I don't know if there's template resolutions, but this is an opportunity right now to put this on top of their radar. There's many competing priorities as we've mentioned, but if this is something that we want to, you know, join in with the other school districts in the area or across state to raise awareness on this, I think it would be something that, you know, maybe we want to do.
They sponsor a legislative week where they set, and unfortunately, it's been on Zoom the past couple of years, but it's, it's, it's exactly that idea of trustees from districts all over, well, not, I would say Northern California mostly, advocate towards our elected officials. So it's already, it's kind of already there. You probably haven't, didn't get an email about it yet, but it's in March, yeah, I believe. And that's the time when, when they sponsor that kind of, they make the appointments for us so that we can talk to our elected officials.
Yeah, my, my, one of my points was that one of the things that I think we could do as a school board, if staff would agree, would be to pass resolutions asking that our two state legislators, some of them are David Conley and Senator Pro Tem Mike McGuire, take a look at the prop, that missing gap, Prop 98, and ask them to, you know, refund or to establish levels, that baseline at that appropriate amount.
Yeah, I can actually, I will do some research and see what we can bring back to the board.
Anything else? Good job. Jeez. Okay, so now we have our last item, which is our first reading of Board Policy 3320, Claims and Actions Against the District.
Yes, this policy was first brought to the last board meeting with the wrong attachment. So we decided to add the right attachment and bring it back. So this is bringing Board Policy 3320 is being brought forward to update the district's procedures for managing claims and legal actions in compliance with current laws. So if there's, have any feedback, we will take it, and then we will present the second reading at the next board meeting for final approval.
Is this CSBA-provided template?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Any other questions? Far be it from me to outthink CSBA. Thank you, Amanda. I don't have any questions about it. Very good. Okay, so now we are with future business. Any future business from our trustees? The alternatives. Well, I think we should have a discussion meeting, or is it a study session?
I'd like to talk to Tony and listen to the recommendations of the trustees, but I'm thinking study session. But I certainly would want to talk to Tony to have a little bit more understanding from him.
But I'd like to have it kind of bubbling around. Anything else?
I'd also like to have a study session. I know we had brought it up previously for our students with disabilities, but also I would like to have a special session as well for our EL students or our multilingual learners. Just because we are-
And student achieve, I just missed that. Student, like, what's the focus on that subgroup, student achievement?
Yeah, because we had added an LCAP goal for our students with disabilities, but we've never like fully discussed what that means, what that looks like, progress. But then also, as I'm looking at the student achievement for our English language learners or our multilingual learners, whichever terminology you want to use, there's a lot of gaps there as well. Like I mentioned, one school had 0% achievement rate for, in that category, for our students. So it's just like, what is going on? And I know everyone cares, and our hearts are all in the right place, but we just have to rethink what we're doing because the students are still not able to act- but we just have to rethink what we're doing because the students are still not able to access the curriculum. And I don't, and I do not like standardized tests, so I know that there's also like cultural issues with the testing. So I don't know if there's any other measures that we could look at as well as a part of that that would give us a better understanding, maybe students are being reclassified, but then I'm also hearing there's issues with LPAC as well, so I, I don't know. But then that also comes into um, building in our own assessments. Outside of like the standardized, but yeah, I just want us to look at um, how we're serving our language learners, our, our second language learners.
Just a quick question on that, would that come as part of a, like an LCAP conversation, like with our goals on LCAP? Or are you thinking that you would recommend a, a separate item? Because it seems like it aligns with us needing to talk about LCAP, but
Yes.
I might be reading that wrong.
I don't know. I feel like there's always an LCAP goal for this student group. But, okay, there doesn't seem to be movement. It can be part of the LCAP discussion, but I just don't know if we need anything more. I mean, if we don't need another meeting, that's fine, but I, it can just be maybe just a, a part of a meeting, but um, we just, we're just not seeing the movement that I think that we want to see for students.
DI for special ed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
DA, DA for special, right, for special education, yeah, DA.
So what about if um, we had a discussion session or study session about our English language learners specifically? And um, and you know, like our district um, ways of dealing with their performance and how we can help this and stop it and try to change this constant historical bad production or protection, anyway. Um, and so, and that could feed into um, the LCAP and the committee, and it would give them some information from us and direction from us for the LCAP committee. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
It doesn't have to be a, a long one, but I think we're all kind of struggling with trying to figure out how to address this better.
You know, I think we're in the same boat with, with special ed as we are with our language learners. They're both, I mean, there's like no movement on the dashboard. So I don't know if it could be a combination discussion or not, but it seems like we have the same issue with both of those groups.
And then also acknowledging that these tests aren't really created for every student. So then again, yeah, like the, so if we're not seeing movement there, then where can we see and measure some type of movement?
I agree.
Just so that we know that, that the students are able to access the curriculum. And also acknowledging that some of these students are both multilingual learners and students with disabilities, yeah.
I would also like to see math assessments for the secondary. What was it, two years ago? We, the elementary came, chose a math assessment, and the secondary did not like it, and we said, fine. And they said, we want to come up with our own, and have we seen that? No, I didn't think so. So that's something else.
No, nothing that we haven't already discussed. I just want to also clarify that it may make more sense versus like a, a resolution versus just a uh, support letter to the budget. I was just glancing at some examples from CSBA, and maybe we just draft a support letter to fix the Prop ninety eight funding.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, I would like a presentation from the Continuous Improvement Committee. You know, the work they're doing is really, really great. It's important, it's a great committee, it's representative of all of our sites. Uh, last meeting, we had a lot of um, admin representation. Um, I just think at this point, I know, um, you know, we've, we're funding long days of uh, subs for our teachers that are on the committee. And, and so I just think it would be benefit all of us to see kind of what's going on, how they structure it, what kinds of things they're looking at and moving towards.
They also feed into the LCAP, Carrie is, is usually, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, are we done? Oh my God, we are done. We are adjourned at eight forty-five.